Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, but before we get going, I'd like a motion to allow trustee Kritzmeyer and trustee O'Reilly to attend. By trustee Tanucci, second by. By trustee Yamil, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, motion carried, you guys are in the meeting. All rise for a pledge of allegiance. Chris is already messing with me. My pledge of allegiance, see the flag? The first item on the agenda is the homeowners association business. Keep tripping on that. Is Prairie Trails here? Anyone? Mark, how do you say it? Cheney? Anyone here from Prairie Trails? Anyone online from Prairie Trails? If not, what about from the preserves of Long Grove? Anyone from the preserves of Long Grove? Ben Miller, are you here? Okay, if not, it's time for public comment. Anyone in the room have public comment? Tony?
Through my conversations with many Villages residents, I have learned that there is an overwhelming sense of frustration that we are headed into a contested election with no knowledge of how the members of this board and candidates, apart from Phil Corum, who is against this and who has studied against the QuikTrip proposal. We don't know how any of you stand on that, and it is an issue of extreme importance to the village, and yet we're being asked to vote on Tuesday for some of it. At your last meeting, about 10:05, you deferred any consideration of this issue until after the election, as though the election had no effect. I think in all fairness to the voters who have yet to decide whom they will support thanks to Tuesday, each of you should tell us where you stand tonight and how you intend to vote on the QuikTrip proposal, so that voters are informed and know who to support and who not to support. Therefore, can we please have an informal roll call of the president, the trustee, and the clerk, who is also a candidate, on this issue? It is not binding, you know that. It is like any campaign question, then, would have occurred had there been illegal voter voters. Can I say it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wanna make a comment there? I know we haven't seen the final packet of material yet either, so...
I'm not sure it's appropriate without reviewing the materials to judge the...
I'm not asking for a formal vote, Mr. Chancellor, I'm asking for an expression of our campaign position. This is not binding.
I understand it's not binding, but it still could introduce complications to the process. It could give QuikTrip grounds to...
I'd be happy to speak to anybody who wants to speak to me, and I'll make an appointment with you. I'll know you.
So what we will do then is I will begin to prepare material which I'll circulate throughout the village, but none of you are prepared to tell anybody before the vote on Tuesday. Where are you standing?
So here's what I can say. I make my decisions based on stats, and those stats have not yet been presented to me. So I have no basis upon which to make a decision. That's my answer.
I don't wanna argue with you. I'm not gonna argue with you. We saw all of you at the plan commission meeting.
I wasn't there, Tony.
I wasn't there.
Honestly, I wasn't there. I really, truly, I mean, you knew me a long time, you know I'm straightforward. I have not seen the materials that have come out of the plan commission. I really don't know what that final plan looked like. I'm not up for election, I'll be very happy to have that conversation with you offline, because...
Okay.
But we have not seen anything. We haven't seen it.
I think you're putting the voters in a terrible position, because you know how strongly a vast number of our residents feel about this, and they have no now, they have no ability to influence this other than persuade people who have already been elected. Thank you. Sorry, this, what country am I in?
All right, thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the room? Sorry, Benjamin?
My name is Benjamin Nassett from 4365 Oakley Lane in the Oakley Homeowners Association. The first issue I wanted to bring up is there's an old daycare on the corner of Old and 10 and 22, and I had to test it the other day, and I didn't notice the graffiti on it, and it's still there, and it's looking pretty bad. Now granted, when the trees grow, and you may not notice it as much, but my bigger issue is, even as a village, if we're allowing properties with a kind of graffiti just to lay around, what kind of message does it send about our village and how we want to present ourselves? Because I like to believe we're Long Grove Illinois, not Gary Indiana. Secondly, my second issue is, I recently received a new group container at my house, and I noticed they're a little bit smaller than what we intend. I mean, I'm not saying they're too big, but they're definitely at least three inches shorter. Now, I don't know if they're maybe volume-wise, they're as big, but I'm concerned about that. And my third and final question is about the status of the special use application about 4359 and only Route 22. Thank you.
Okay, do you wanna address those graffiti? Because I think we're trying to work with them to clear it. Plus, there's somebody that's looking to develop that property.
I think it's closing or in the process of ownership for a dog daycare facility. So within that process, once it changes ownership, we'll have them clean it up, they're responsible for it, so we'll work on getting that addressed right away with them. The group containers, they're the same gallons in size, maybe they're just wider, they're sort of taller.
They're shorter and fatter.
Yeah. Special use application still in process on the village side, so no updates as of this meeting.
Okay, Charlie or Linda? Yes.
My name is Charles Cardella, 1237 Antietam Drive. I wanted to come before the board today to commend you for doing such an excellent job for your outsourcing. Obviously, outsourcing happened with the sheriff's police, multiple administrations before. I've lived here for 24 years, the county sheriff has always been our protection, so that was done years ago, and you've continued it. A plus job. Two, I'm a tremendous board, that you outsource the highway maintenance, that was done with many of these people sitting here. You did that, you outsourced it to E.L.A. Township. I believe the services that we get on the highway department are as good or better than we have our own in-house people, so a plus on that. I think this board and this administration, especially with Chris and with Dana, you are, these are both highly qualified men, all of you board members are articulate and engaged, and you serve for no cost. Effluent, the team that you have, led by Bill, I mean that. I believe that the number one issue before this board, and always, is safety. Safety for everyone in the village. Not for Country Club Meadows where we leave, but for everybody in the village. Unfortunately, because all of us live in Long Grove, we're targets of thieves and burglars. They want our stuff, and I'll make even a comment that the situation that happened in Country Club Meadows two and a half years ago, those same thieves came to our door with masks in two days when Country Club Meadows was broken in, and they talked to my wife. They had masks on, they said, "Can we have your trees cut? Can we cut your trees?" And my wife even said, "What are you wearing masks for?" This was the same group of thieves that broke into other houses and that some of our neighbors really chased out of the neighborhood. And I think that when it comes for the sheriffs to be new, when that contract comes up, because that's how we're protected, my plea to this board is that the amount of surveillance would increase, is that you actually have protection increasing here, and maybe even a program, Chris, I don't even know if this is possible, that if homeowners wanna plug in to say, "Hey, a panic button," and it goes right from the home to the sheriff's office, maybe that's doable. And if it's not doable with the sheriff's office, my encouragement to everyone on this board is, could you put the bid out for our protection to the army of Buffalo Grove? They have 48 police officers. Is it possible, when the contract comes up for the Lake County Sheriff, that we could elicit a discussion with the Buffalo Grove Police Department? They would love, I'm sure, to have some of our money, just like this wide board did with E.L.A. Township. So I'm going to commend you on both of those things and throw some at you. The last thing is, this village needs revenues. In my opinion, the number one place that we could put revenues, I mean, I know you don't choose it, but it's by Menards. There's three or four outlots there, and I know that is owned by Menards, but then any encouragement this board could do by bringing in sales, tax, revenue, retail, or food, whatever it is, would be brilliant. And the same thing with the Quik, that was on Route 83. That was another place that could have been doing revenues. Whatever the plan commission decides, whatever this board decides, great, but this village needs revenues, especially if we're going to increase police reception. Other than that, thank you again for all of you that are here. You serve us, the people here in Long Grove. We appreciate it. Job well done. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cardella, I have a question here. I would, you talk a little tricks, and you put a lot out there. Now, would you read the letter that you wrote and delivered the last meeting? And I feel for you regarding when you say it's in your line of vision. Is there any way that the HOA could eliminate that problem for you?
The answer is no, because that's where it's at. But the problem is not a camera, because I implore the villagers here, the trustees here, the problem is for every homeowner in Long Grove. That's the problem. All of us are targeted, can be targeted by thieves because we have affluent, and they want our stuff. So us having clock cameras on Shaffer Road in Country Club Meadows, it's not the solution. Why? Because there's other residents that live in other neighborhoods, and they're at risk too. So my point is to this board, think out of the box. It's a problem all of us have. Why? We're targets, we're virtually targets of thieves and burglars. That will never go away. I don't care if you put clock cameras all over the village, which is unreasonable. It won't work. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, I was concerned that part of it for you, I got your argument about the fuckin' memory, but the other part of it was aesthetics, that you have to see it from your home, because you're on the corner of Teton and Shaffer.
Right.
So I was just wondering if the HOA, how high, does it even know how high it is?
It's like 10 feet high.
10 feet, huh?
Yeah.
The number one issue, a poll there, okay, that's an issue. The number one issue is 24/7 surveillance. That's the major issue. It's not only me, there's other people in this village that believe the same thing. 24/7 surveillance is not the path forward, ladies and gentlemen, it's not. But having more police protection, and maybe pushing a button, a panic button in my home that immediately brings the Buffalo Grove policemen there, that could have been done with my wife standing at the door, and they were right at a door. She had a conversation with them, and these are gangs. These are organized gangs. And guess what? The gangs aren't going away. So, and a clock camera won't help us against gangs, period.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, Linda?
Thank you so much. I'm Linda Cardella, and nice to meet you. I just wanted to follow up on the letter that we sent to the trustees, and thank you so much for reading that and for responding to it. I guess my point that I wanted to make was, number one, I would ask that our address, our personal home address be removed from the official clock surveillance camera document, it's an official document of the state, and they said that our address was on there. Chris, thank you so much for your letter, for your email, but that our address was put on the document, it's on every page. We never gave permission for our address to be on there. In previous documents that we received from our HOA board, our address did not appear, and your comment was that it was due to the latitude or whatever, then if that's the case, please talk to the clock camera and ask them to take our address off, because I am not comfortable with our address to be on there. I'm also not comfortable with our address being listed as the location of clock camera number two. Okay? It's over on Sumner Drive, wherever, you want to put the Sumner Drive, you know, resident who is in Country Club Estates on that address, but I am not comfortable with our home address being on those documents. So thank you so much for drawing your attention to that. Also, I'm not comfortable that we were told by our Country Club Meadows board that all 62 homes in Country Club Meadows would be able to access the data that's being collected, and I have that on email.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, she said that all 62 homes would have access to the data, and she's not comfortable with it.
According to the treasurer of our home.
Oh, okay.
That was put in an email.
That's an old email from 2022, so I didn't clarify that today. So that's an email from 2022, and if you read there after that, there was a letter that, the waiver that says that the Country Club Meadows waived all rights, that no residents will have access except when accompanied by a sheriff's deputy and filing a report. So there is a letter from 2023 that's in there that can be updated to go along with the license to do that. So that was an old email, I think before they understood, as they were just getting into the process, and before they understood what would go into that.
Okay, I never received that email with that information, so thank you for that information, but still, there, it's a known fact that those data, that data can be hacked. I mean, these crime organizations are pretty sophisticated, and they can hack the information. So I'm not comfortable with that, and I'm not comfortable with walking outside of my home. I've lived in Long Grove for 25 years. I'm not comfortable going for a walk in my neighborhood and being on a camera. Okay? I'm not comfortable seeing that camera on my home. It's creepy to me. It's almost like I was thinking we should name Long Grove into China Grove, because are we gonna start getting cameras all over the village? I'm not comfortable with that. That's not why I moved to Long Grove. Beautiful name, it's a beautiful community. We enjoy our privacy. So I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with every time I turn out on Shaffer, that my car is gonna be on a camera. And I know that there's other residents that live down Antietam and out of Long Grove that are residents of Country Club Estates that aren't aware of this, and they weren't even aware that this camera was going out. And we're neighbors, and we watch out for each other. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Can I ask you one question, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Do you air your opinion in your HOA meetings?
What's that?
If you air your opinion, what you have expressed here in your HOA meeting, the majority of the HOA members decide this, or there are some people which, who they are not aware of the HOA?
Well, I know in talking to some of our neighbors, you know, our neighbors are a combination of Country Club Meadows and Country Club Estates, and the residents who are members of the Country Club Estates were not aware of this. There's three homes on Antietam Drive that are Country Club Meadows. The rest of them are Country Club Estates, and they were never there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Regarding the license, the latest copy that I saw still shows the HOA is having access, so that needs to be removed. It'd be only the sheriff's department.
Thank you, Ken.
It does have the wording in there.
Can you make it more clear?
Yeah, it has it in there, number three, I think below that it says, precludes use of data except in conjunction with an investigation into a matter about which a report has been filed with the sheriff. So it does say restricts access to any video, images, or other data gathered by the facilities to the licensee, then after that precludes the use of data except in conjunction with an investigation into a matter about which a report has been filed. So it does say that it includes that, but only in regards to a matter which has been filed, so six, in unlicensed hits, for six special conditions, A, it's A3.
So there are conditions under which the HOA would have access?
Yes, and we can further refine those when we talk about it this time.
So that brings up the question I asked, or who is the HOA?
No, so it's only, it's not that they have access, they've given up, they've waived access in that letter. So the members only have access in conjunction with a sheriff's deputy when filing a report, that they're able to view the data in relation to their filed report. They can see the data in relation to the crimes they're reporting, if accompanied by a sheriff's deputy. So if they don't have access to it, they're able to point out what they're seeing, so they do not have access.
Obviously, we need a lot more information to review this further, but there's more public comments, so let's keep going. Yes?
May I ask, Mr. President, is it proper to be having discussion on this if it's not on the agenda?
No, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be. I hear you. We should be focused on the public comment right now. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, please do, public comment, you're good, so thank you.
I live on Antietam, and I've been there 45 years, almost 46 years. We never had cameras before. I don't want people to come, how many times did I drive out the back to go through Country Club Meadows or how? Many times, Country Club Meadows comes down Shaffer. Shaffer's the main road, anywhere that camera's gonna be. There's people on the left that are Country Club Estates, people, two houses on the right that are Country Club Meadows. You wanna put the camera down by Checker, that's okay. But I don't want it near my house, been there 45 years, never had to have it before, all of a sudden, one person has a break-in, possible break-in. I've got security systems my whole time. I assume 90% of the people, 99%, have security systems down their house. That in itself, I got cameras inside, outside, every place. So I don't see the need, and you see 50 cars go down. How do you know which one is the one that tried to break into somebody's house? You gotta eliminate all the cars, and you have to eliminate all the people that live there with their cars. So I don't know how that would even help, I think, the police would be the best thing. We have, the economy comes through once in a while, but not as much as they show. So I don't live in Country Club Meadows, I don't vote for this camera, but I live in Country Club Estates. Nobody asks me, nobody informs me, I don't even know if anybody else is in Country Club Estates that they heard about it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Cardella, we do not know that part of that.
Can we schedule this for our next agenda?
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, so we're gonna keep, continue with the public comment, so go ahead. Yeah, Bobby, we're gonna continue with public comment.
Okay. When you're all right, I'll go on Sumner Drive, on Sumner State. A lot of you guys know, my husband and I, Chuck was a former trustee. I believe a lot of you know, the word, we've been on the board, HOA board, executive board member, for over 15 years. We learned last week that this vote was imminent, and, you know, while I understand, if my having a husband and former trustee, all the good work you do, so I'm agreeing with everything that Charlie Cardella said, but I'm also agreeing with everything that Linda Cardella said. I don't understand how this proposed approval of these cameras on public property that are owned by a private subdivision got this far with nobody thinking to notify the Country Club Estates HOA. It doesn't make sense. That ties into the second topic that I have, is that communication from this current village administration is like non-existent. We can't find out anything. I contacted Chris last week to say, "We just learned that there's a contested election for trustees." We had no idea. The election is in a few days. So I think, yes, there was some very generic article in the Mail's Bridge that I believe your marketing company pulled from somewhere, that could have been an article written in any municipality anywhere in the country. I think you might expect more when there's a contested election, so let people know. We don't know where people stand. Now, I did reach out, and I heard back from the king of the candidates, but, you know, I'm the secretary of our HOA, and we typically like to help out our community. We have 216 homes, to like have some understanding of the issues, the local issues that affect our community.
Thank you.
I just got one comment, one question and a comment. My first question is, who's holding the data or the cameras that they go in? I'm not gonna belabor the point, you guys know how I feel about it, because I sent every single trustee and President Jacob a letter on the subject, but I'd be very interested to know who actually has physical possession of that camera data. And I also wanna point out that there is a lawsuit against FLAT in Connecticut, and that lawsuit claims, and I wanna be careful, I don't know this for a fact, but that lawsuit claims that FLAT does not dump that information every 30 days. They are sending that to some type of national database. That sent the children responding. So, that's all. I don't wanna belabor the point, you guys had my letter, we understand where it comes from.
All right, thanks for your comment. Any other comments in the room? Or on? Sure.
So everybody in our row got their address off, and we stood and waited.
What's your address? Can you set, or?
3204 West Over Lane, and actually, our neighbor is still online, 3205 West Over Lane, didn't get theirs either, and we're on 3222 Illinois Route 53, and we didn't get ours either.
Did you?
I don't know which is...
Oh, we're switching garbage collectors to...
Well, this is very confusing.
Yeah.
I ain't going with bags, nothing here.
Yeah.
Garbage.
Yeah, so...
I don't know.
Yeah, so anyways...
I owe 15 bucks, so I get 15% off, but I brought the article here from them.
Yeah. I haven't seen their article yet, so I guess it hit the mail. Yeah, let me just, let me answer, let me just do one thing really quick. So the last garbage day for Waste Management is tomorrow. After the Waste Management, after Waste Management picks up your garbage, leave the cans out, they're supposed to pick them up. The new cans should be used, starting basically, yeah, next, well, yeah, but you start using them basically, what, on Wednesday or Thursday, because?
Who's gonna, Jerry Jacob is on Monday.
It'll be on Monday, but, but start using the new cans.
Oh, Philly, you're kidding.
Yes, yes, yes.
Really?
Yeah, but do not, do not use them yet, because you won't be able to put those out by the curb until...
Monday.
Right?
The whole village does Monday pickup.
The whole village now. So the good news is, this was a little difficult to get done, but we discovered the contract was expiring, we went out to bid, we got a heck of a price, we're saving, you know, on average, like nine bucks a month.
Nine dollars.
Yeah, and so it's real money, it's real money, and, you know, we had a little bit of inconvenience with this transition, just getting the cans and everything, getting the communication out. It was not perfect, but somehow it's gonna get done, and thank you for your patience on that. Ellen?
Just followed along with the comment here. Several people in Briarcrest also did not yet, while some got the cans, a whole bunch did not. And they called Groot, and Groot said, "We can't help you because we didn't get your name or your number from Waste Management." And they say, "We've been paying the bill, we've been paying the bill all the time." So this whole thing is really a... So, this, this whole thing is really a circus.
Well, thank you for your comment. In the end, I'm hopeful that this is gonna work out, this was my fear when we approved the contract, that we're gonna have these issues. Let's hope, for the most part, we get the cans out there, it, it works, and if there's problems, call the village, tell them to call the village, have them call the village.
Well, if they can get through to the village...
Well, everything's fixed there, yeah. We, there was a phone system problem that one day, so, thank you, thanks, Ellen.
We get, like, an email on from the HOA president, like, around the morning?
Yeah, we did, we did, so there'll be another one going out tomorrow, there was one yesterday, there was one of the HOA presidents. Who got an email from the village yesterday?
Oh, I did.
Did you get an email from the village yesterday?
No.
You did?
I was saying that the Facebook post this week has been good, like, every day.
Okay, and you're getting the Facebook post, so there, literally, I think it was, was a...
There are some of us who have not done and never will do, they...
Right, right.
Okay, but, but all I know is, I was, I was, I was out, I was out, and I got several residents that approached me when I was out on Saturday night, I wrote Chris first thing in the morning, or no, Friday night, I wrote Chris the first thing in the morning on Saturday saying, "We gotta, gotta make sure we're communicating, this is the week, this is the transition." Okay, Nick, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, as long as I'm here, I will say, like, something to you, date last night when we went to Waste Management, I got a special exemption for using the Waste Management, 'cause my, my driveway's a half mile long, and I don't really wanna walk a mile every time I pick up the garbage, and, and it's too heavy, those things, those cans are too heavy though, so we stuck into a pickup truck, so he let me just go without. So that's why, I don't, I don't want the bins, 'cause I, so that's thirty, thirty, thirty-two twenty-two, I don't want it.
Do you have them now, they dropped them off?
No, we didn't get them.
No, but he knew them, and our neighbor knew them. I'm sorry, it is complicated, and I get it.
All right, so we, we are really trash talking tonight, we really are.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, all right. Okay, any more, any more public comment tonight? All right, let's, let's, keep us moving then, thank you for that. There's no public safety report tonight. We do have a consent agenda, and it's approval of the twenty-twenty-five, the February Treasuries Report, approval of regular board meeting minutes from the March eleventh meeting, and then the executive session, meeting minutes from the same meeting. Any comments, questions, or somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
Oh, someone.
I think it's half of the minutes, but...
Honore?
It was a heading, I'm trying to...
Okay, so you had a, you wanted, there's an adjustment on the minute?
Um, yeah, it was, a word that didn't need to be there, T-E-S-C-C-I-N-G, is it exciting the executive session? Uh, on page six of the, uh, I don't know, page ten.
What did I...
It's an underlined heading.
Do you have it, Chris?
Oh, exiting.
What is it?
Exit, exiting. The scrivener's there, we'll adjust it for the final.
Okay, so who made a motion?
Exit, yeah.
Yeah, exiting. With that change, who made a motion to approve?
I did.
Okay, so trustee, thank you, Bobby. Trustee O'Reilly approved, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
We can't hear you.
Yeah, Monday.
Was it Rita who seconded?
Yeah, Rita seconded, it was moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee O'Connor.
All right, trustee Barowski?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Can you hear from trustee Kritzmeyer?
Can you hear me now?
We can, yeah, yeah.
Okay, aye. Sometimes I think if I go on mute too long, it, it sticks.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Do we get everyone?
Yeah.
All ayes, motion carried. Okay, discussion and consideration of an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery, retail, retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax for the village of Long Grove. Ah, so, we discussed this at the last meeting, I don't know if you want to say anymore, or trustee Kritzmeyer wants to say anymore on this item, but we kinda went around in circles, we put it on the agenda again, since we now have a, we have all trustees here.
Sorry I wasn't able to be there last time, but I definitely am in favor of this. I, I know that we have a very high tax area, but this is not a new tax, it's a reinstatement of a current tax. I, to the earlier gentleman, I don't know who he was, who said that this village needs revenues, I say absolutely. That would leave a big hole, in my opinion. I also think that, you know, our, really, the grocery tax is mainly sunset, so it's not a real change, and that attracts people from adjacent, so basically, you have multiple municipalities, or people from multiple municipalities, who are patronizing and choosing to patronize that store, creating that tax, and that tax is one hundred percent enjoyed, if you will, by the village of Long Grove. I, I really do think that's an important thing for us to maintain. I do know, we, obviously, that we've got a pretty big reserve fund that has future uses earmarked, really, the rest of our village hall payment, and also, we have before us a, a discussion of Lake Michigan water. And I'll just be really honest, with what's going on right now, with anything that's federal government, until that money's in hand, I won't believe it. So, I, I just, I really do urge us to maintain this one percent grocery tax. And by the way, I shop there.
Um, hold on, you have a comment, but let's...
No, I'm just waiting a minute, she can't see me at all, I'm an idiot.
Oh, okay.
Wave over there.
Got it, all right, so I wanna make sure the board has, can discuss this again, I think we were a little bit all over the place on it. I mean, trustee O'Reilly, I'll just start with you, what do you feel about this tax? Do you have any opinion on it, or?
Were you asking me?
Yeah, I was.
Oh, okay, let me tell you, to me, it's a tax, is a tax, is a tax. We paid this forever, we need it, and so I, I totally endorse it.
All right, thank you for that feedback. I know trustee Tanucci was positive at the last meeting. Trustee Barowski was not.
Put cans F to the other board.
Yeah.
On Monday.
I think we can hear you, maybe, Bobby, we can hear you.
Bobby, we can hear you.
Did you hear me?
We could, yeah, 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 yeah.
I, I support the new tax.
Thank you.
Yeah, we heard that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're doing, if you're doing a side conversation, you wanna mute, probably.
Yep.
No, I'm not, I'm not in favor of continuing or adding this new tax, if you will. Living in Illinois is like death by a thousand cuts, and this is just another municipality adding their, oh, it's just one percent cut to the total tax burden that the residents of Illinois are forced or extorted to pay. And I really think that trustee Kritzmeyer makes some good comments, but they're unsubstantiated comments, because frankly, we don't have data as to how many non-Long Grove shoppers shop at, at the stores. So I think that's an assumption, and I don't think it's substantiated. And if it is substantiated, please share that data with us. No, I'm not in favor of it, it's a tax on milk, and eggs, and groceries, and it's one percent. I mean, give me a break, let's stop nickel and diming people to death.
All right, thank you. We'll go back over here on this side.
I gave it more thought, I was uncertain last time. And I enjoy the grants that we get, we've enjoyed the benefits of motorfield tax, which are dropping because electric cars don't pay motor fuel. I, I would really love to see the pathway connection up Old McHenry, which is close to million dollars, make that happen. This helps us to do that, so I, I, I don't disagree.
Can you turn your volume up, Rita?
People sell me to do that.
She's trying to find the knob to turn it up.
Well, help her.
So, um...
Move that microphone closer to you, would you mind, Sharon?
This, this, this is a continuation, it's, it's not an increase, it's a continuation, which I, I, I don't think that excuses it, I don't think it makes it any easier, however, we, yeah, I'm, I'm okay on that.
Okay, you're, basically, I think we got a yes. All right, and trustee Jamil, any more comments on it?
I'm not in favor, I agree with Chris Barowski. I think the governor of the state has waived off this, there's no reason you can fight, I understand the village revenue aspect of it, and I understand Chris Meyer's point of view as well, but I think there are a lot of other things which can be done to increase the revenue, not both the tax on middle and lower class people living in Long Grove or anywhere else.
It's okay, all right, all right. I'm muted.
No, you're not muted, Bobby, so, you're not...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm not in favor of this tax.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, there's probably enough votes to approve it, so somebody wanna make a motion?
Motion to approve the new sales tax.
Okay. Well, so what do you, how do you wanna say it? She made, Bobby made the motion to approve it, but it's the motion to approve the, the municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax for the village of Long Grove. That's the motion you made, trustee O'Reilly?
It, it was.
Okay, great, does somebody wanna second it?
Second.
Second.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll, seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer, that's a roll call vote.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
We can't hear you, Anne.
Aye.
Wanna say it one more time?
She's an aye.
God, we can't hear you.
Why is that?
Oh, you're back, all right, say yes, say yes.
Aye, yes.
There you go.
Trustee Barowski?
No, thank you.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. All right, I'm gonna ask for help on this next one, 'cause this is discussion and consideration resolution approving a modified extension of the lease agreement between the village and the ELO Soccer Club. I would look for you to explain what happened.
Yes, so this is a slight change that ELO came back to us with after reviewing the contract that was approved on the board a few meetings ago. The, the original contract, or the original lease agreement that we had with them had an amortization schedule for the parking lot improvements that they did, which didn't extend to the well and irrigation components, so they are asking to have the amortization schedule added into the, for the irrigation and well that they're gonna put in, similar to the, the previous schedule that was there before.
But that was primarily because we can cancel at will, right?
Yeah, or if the state were to condemn the property, to try and take it over for Route fifty-three.
Right.
So it's a kind of, it's like a condemnation.
So when they, when they, when the ELO Soccer Club put all the parking lot and everything in, we had agreed to the same language, and so they're asking us, because they're gonna invest in a well, would we agree to the language? That's what it is.
Yep.
I think it makes sense. Question, though, if it is condemned, say, for that example, does that mean we're out that money, we reimburse the soccer club?
Good question.
Alexander, do you have a thought of that?
What is the question?
The question is, if that property is condemned by the state, and we're required to reimburse ELO Soccer Club for the expenditures, the prorated portion of the expenditures, do we end up holding the bag for that money?
Doesn't that make it encumbered, and the state would have to do something to, for us?
I don't know, that's why I asked the question.
I don't think the answer is.
I, I understand your point, I, I don't know the answer, that's why you pay lawyers.
Well, I mean, so the question I would have, so that's one question. Second question is, if we're not responsible for the lease terminating, why, why should we be on the hook for it, right?
Well, they improved the property.
Yes, all right.
And we, they're asking to clarify that, because sometimes, like, for example, if you're a retail outlet, and you put your counters in, and your refrigerators, and they're attached, it becomes real property, so...
But I'm saying, we didn't cause it.
I, I understand.
Okay.
I guess we'd have to sue the state of Illinois.
Besides, the intention is that this doesn't come into play. They wanna stay there a while, we don't wanna have to pay any amortization schedule.
We didn't get the question, we didn't get the question answered, or...
It just, the less he will be entitled to reimbursement, so I'd assume they would come to us first, and we'd have to argue with the state about that, if the state invoked the condemnation.
So, that sort of a carte blanche thing, do we know what the investment cost is? Like, do we have a limit on what that is, or?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
And it's how much each year, though, it's, it's in the schedule, right?
Yeah.
I have a question. So, if we terminate the lease, then what happens? The cost has to be reimbursed by the contractor?
Yeah. That's part of the agreement, too, that it's kind of condemned or terminated.
So first year, within the first year, it's ninety-five, second year eighty-five, third year seventy, goes down to fifty-five in the fourth year, fifth year thirty-five, and fifteen percent in year six, and five in year seven, that's what we're responsible for.
And we have to give notice.
What if we sell the water?
There, therein lies a fun one, but, uh, we...
I think it, I think it'd take the state ten years to condemn it anyway, or at least five.
It would take a while.
Realistically, realistically.
I think it's something we need to do, I think it makes sense, really, it's a good answer.
So you wanna make a motion to approve?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we, you know, not discuss it, I'm just saying...
So, so trustee Barowski made a motion to approve.
Yeah? Oh, yeah.
I heard you say yes, did you change your mind?
No, I, I think we need to do it, I'll make that motion.
All right, so we made the motion, seconded by...
Second.
By trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Barowski?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Oh, we got that one.
Trustee O'Reilly?
You got it on mute, Bobby, now, we have you muted, if you can.
Aye.
Thank you.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, everyone. All right, discussion and consideration of resolution approving a water purchase and sale contract with the village of Buffalo Grove to obtain Lake Michigan water. Who wants to be the first one out of the gate to explain what's going on here?
Um, I'll take a stab at it. So, this goes back several years, most recently, we discussed this at the budget meeting last year, and we included the money in the, in the fiscal year budget, and what stemmed this, partly, I think from my side, Jeff can maybe expand further, is the county has implemented additional requirements on remediating radium in the groundwater system through their ordinances, and as part of this, we would have to invest significantly in village infrastructure to update our system to account for this. And another alternative is to connect through Buffalo Grove to have Lake Michigan water, which we feel would be a better quality product in long term. And, I mean, the memo outlines a lot of details and analysis on there.
If I could, I'll just add that in addition to the requirement to mitigate radium, the equipment in the pump house is aging, I know at the very least we need a new sediment filter, other equipment's aging, it will need to be replaced, the pumps are aging, last bagger is around a hundred grand apiece.
And more.
They're more now, okay. So, kind of a pay me now, or pay me even more later issue.
But we're not...
Michigan water just makes sense in this case.
We're not shutting that down.
It would be maintained as a backup?
Yes, yes.
System, but would require far less maintenance and extend the life of the pumps?
I see, 'cause it's being...
Used much less, yep.
Okay.
Would just be monthly testing.
Right.
But it's still a pay me later scenario when that pump ultimately needs replacing, right? Are both the pumps need replaced?
Yes, or if we add a, an interconnect in, to, as a backup source, which was part of the original grant application, but since you've nine hundred and sixty thousand or versus the two-point-four, I think it was two-point-four that we requested originally, we scaled back that secondary connection.
Okay, so to clarify, so we're keeping those two pumps as our backup?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
In case we have a service interruption.
Okay, but I, I grew up in the city of Chicago, the main broker, like the Evanston Skokie break, there's no backup there. The pipe broke, right? Why do we need backup? Why do we want to maintain that into perpetuity? Why not shut it down?
Well, certainly an option that can be done, right?
I'm just asking. I, I'm just asking that question.
They'll have to distribute, right?
Look at that.
Yeah.
Well, we have to distribute, but I don't want to sink two hundred grand into two new pumps in X number of years.
Maybe that's the point at which we decide.
Right.
To do that.
Well, what's our, what's our, what's our maintenance cost difference if we maintain those two pumps as backups?
Uh, the deep wells, those are the pumps we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
The, uh, the deep well pumps would only need to be cycled and tested monthly.
Okay, so what's that cost us from your organization?
Um.
It is your organization, right?
Yes, yes, we were so.
I mean, if it worked like it was, it's what it is.
I do that because I'm not entirely sure if I can go with the number. It's on the order of a thousand dollars or so, you know, to run it, get the test.
Per month?
Per month.
Okay. And then what's the board's, uh, pleasure in terms of maintenance going forward? If, if the panel blows up, do we fix it or do we just shutter it? I mean, why do we need that backup if, if it's like Michigan water and we have crap with the water flowing and it's no different than the greater Chicagoland area that's got one pipe running up and down the street, right?
What if we kept it running until, until we know that we can reliably count on?
I get that, yeah.
You know, you know what I mean? To just keep, like a battery backup, you don't have to keep it forever. But, but it, you know, as soon as we, as soon as we get rid of it, you know, there'll be, there'll be a catastrophe of some sort, I'm sure. That's just.
Well, I get it, but at what price?
So, so the thing is, we don't have to decide that tonight, right?
I have some more questions.
So, okay, um, go ahead, keep going.
I just wanted to clarify, so the red box drawn in on the PDF, um, that's the service area, proposed service area? What, what is, what is that actually, the red box of, like, I know the firehouse is in there, downtown is in there, but what's the rest of it? Is that what we're proposing that's going, can?
Can.
Can. So just for clarification, the, that includes the residents on our Alton Heights Road behind the south?
So basically, I'm sorry, basically what that means is, if we want to extend water service to any area inside the red outline, we do not have to go back to Buffalo Grove and ask for permission. If we want to extend water outside of that red outline, then we would have to go back to Buffalo Grove and ask for permission.
Why, why do we need permission from Buffalo Grove? They're giving us a total water allocation, right? It's two hundred and sixty thousand.
Which is based on the red outline.
Theoretically, theoretically, we could deem our water, was how I read that.
Well, I thought so too, but.
If, if we expanded to the.
Allocation is a better word than permission. We're going to need to just only allocate it.
Well.
For May, May.
I'm very confused.
May.
Okay, so more questions. So the memo said two hundred and sixty thousand.
Yes, can I, I'll clarify. So the, this, the red boundary is estimated to be a hundred and thirty thousand gallons per day, up from our twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand right now. And, and we had that doubled in the agreement to provide more than enough, um, allowable flow.
Okay, so getting back to what Tom Kent was making, so you're saying that if we expanded to outside of the red box, we need to get Buffalo Grove's approval to do that, even though we're under allocation? If we're only pumping, why is that?
They wanted to have some kind of sense of what we would expand into, as their indication.
It's, it seems kind of silly to me, actually. I don't, I don't know why we would want to do that. I mean, if we're under the allocation, why are we going to Buffalo Grove here? Are we doing?
I don't think they will.
But contractually, we're obligated to get their permission? Here's my point, here's what I'm trying to get to. Um, if I live in the red box, I won the location lottery. As one of our trustees lives in the red box, right? If I don't live in the red box, it's a whole bunch of money going into this for a project for all the reasons, as justified as that may be, but it's still a whole bunch of money. And us Northsiders are still left high and dry, unintended. Um, so for that two hundred and sixty, the, the difference between the current usage and the two hundred and sixty, I was hoping we could allocate that balance as a reserve to help HOAs that may need water in the future. Wells go dry, maybe some HOA that has density that could run a pipe and wants to run a pipe. And we, I, I know you guys think I fell off the truck sometimes and bumped my head too hard, but seriously, the neighborhood.
Sometimes.
The neighborhood.
Sorry, Chris.
There's neighborhoods, don't know why I'm walking this way, because I open the road. Um, there's neighborhoods that use hauled water, where the truck shows up once a week and pours five thousand gallons into their tank.
Where?
Scottsdale, Arizona. I.
Oh, oh, had you meant locally. Okay, okay.
My community.
Yeah.
Some people have private wells, some people live full-time on hauled water, where the truck shows up once a week, fills their tank, they're good. They don't have to drill a twelve-hundred full butt. Um, is there any way we could save that allocation for helping some of the other communities? Or maybe a new development comes in and says, you know what? Lake Michigan water sounds really good. Now we got to do is haul a six-thousand gallon trough every three days over there. Is, is there any way we can sort of buffer that allocation and save it for the rest of the community? Or, that's, that's what I'm trying to get to. Like, put a sand pipe in, put some way for the rest of the community to do something with that, with that water if we need it.
I think we have even more Lake Michigan allocation.
Right.
Um, Jeff, isn't it about two-sixty?
Our Lake Michigan allocation is like, like, two-nine million gallons a day. So that's.
How much?
A little bit more.
Okay, thirty thousand more, yeah, okay.
How, how?
Thirty thousand is what we're using now, so.
How much of that is already spoken for?
Aaron's Landing.
Well, that's actually counted against the, uh, county's allocation.
We're supposed to get credit.
Correct.
Yeah.
When that exists. But, um, right now, the, uh, the pump is.
Thanks, Chris.
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand gallons a day.
No, I, I'm saying of, of that allocation, how much, how much of that has already been spoken for?
There's, there's none that's reserved for anybody. Twenty-nine thousand is what's being distributed right now that would come, come out of that.
I'm talking, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the total amount that's available from Lake Michigan. That number is a static number, is it not?
It changes.
From the total DNR allocation in the big town communities?
Yeah.
Yeah. They actually ratcheted that down a couple of years ago. But Long Grove's portion of that allocation remain the same.
Which is a separate number in Buffalo Grove. And by the way, if we ever were to
extend water to the Northside, it would most likely come from the same pipe that serves Aaron's Landing, not this pipe.
Well, not exactly.
I would think.
Uh, there's, there's also, uh, Lake Zurich is trying to get water.
Right.
It's going to come right by us. It's going to come right by us. In fact, in fact, I am on, I am on a municipal water system with Lake County and I may end up with some of that Lake Michigan water that's destined for Lake Zurich. So just so you know, there's going to be another opportunity up north.
Yeah, I would.
So my point was, wouldn't it likely not come from Buffalo Grove? Would it come from?
That wouldn't. That'd come from CLC John.
Yeah.
They're coming down Indian Creek.
Yeah, they are.
So, right there.
Yeah.
So what, what if, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. I think you, appreciate it.
Well, I, I, before you go though, I, I know that Anne tried to speak before. Trustee Kritzmeyer, just hold your thought. Did you have something you wanted to share?
A, I'm in favor of this. I think it's something we should do. B, I can totally see, Chris, if we were in the Bu- Village of Buffalo Grove, um, meeting, they'd want to know, like, they've got a plan for pumping infrastructure and so forth. So I can get, ask, I can, I can mentally understand them asking for some sort of, not just water, but also area. So, I, that's all I wanted to, to say, but I, I, I think this is something we should do. Um, and now, I, you may think I win the lottery, but if you've ever seen how far, well, you have seen how far my house is from the pipe in the driveway, it's as if I, it's not like every other residence on the street.
Well, so today's enlightening because I really didn't realize that your property is included and it's furthermore enlightening by Bill's comments a few moments ago that seventeen percent of the board has, may have access to Lake Michigan water while the other eighty-two percent of us don't, which is really enlightening.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we are included.
What was that, sir?
I don't think we, our division is included here.
No, no, we're not included here, but I'm saying is that, um, that, that we, um, there's plans, we're, we're on, uh, Lake County water, not the deep well. They plan to connect, um, our system to Lake Michigan water. That's the plan. They also are, we had another, believe it or not, our water system's only like twenty-five years old. We had a major rupture again. That's the second one in a year. So, they're going to be replacing, you got a postcard in the mail, they're going to be replacing piping in our subdivision, but the eventual plan is to connect, connect us to Lake Michigan water. And we're way up north. We're, we're way up there.
Just to clarify, when you say our water system, you mean where you live?
Where I live, yes. Well, so we live in the same subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I.
Yeah, we, so we live in the same subdivision, so.
So my percentages are wrong.
You're up to forty-two percent, Chris. Three-seventy.
Oh, right?
No, but, but, you know, interestingly enough, it's just that's how it worked out when we, when we built there, right? So it's on, you know, municipal water and sewer.
I mean, the fact is, that we built our water system near the, the downtown of Long Grove.
Okay, so, um, you were gonna, uh, trustee O'Connor was going to say something, right?
No, I just, I have some, just a few questions.
Sure.
I probably should have more. I read the whole thing. It was like, is there anything we have to do? Is there anything we're not liable for, you know?
Well, actually, we, we can sign the contract and not do anything.
For about one thing. Come back to me.
Go ahead.
No.
Okay.
I got one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can, can, how much water can Buffalo Grove sell? You know, they talk about our allocation and, and our X number of gallons. How much are they allowed to sell?
I don't know that number.
Can we answer the question another way? The other way is that, the problem is, is that with all the water conservation, they have a whole bunch of excess water because they built the thing to, to sell more water. And so for, right, right now for them, it's very expensive for them to operate this system. They can find other users in other communities. It subsidizes their, their water system that was built in times when, I don't know, what was the toilet, five gallons? I have no idea. You know what I mean? Showers that didn't have the special nozzles on, um, people watering their lawns like crazy, um, and all those kinds of things. So they have a real issue that, that they have, they can, they need to, to sell more water in order to.
So they, they need more customers.
They need more customers, yeah. That's our issue.
So, so this water is going to cost residents in the red zone six seventy-nine a gallon as opposed to continuing with their well and the chances of radium.
Right.
Having to, that's a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay, I.
If, if they want to connect.
Per thousand? Six seventy, per thousand is what they're charging?
Thousand gallons, correct.
Yep.
Yes.
That doesn't mean we're charging the residents that are the users.
No, that doesn't affect our, our.
We still have our delivery fee.
But they're, right, right. They're charging us what their costs are, is what I understand from this. And we, we, we have user fees. We have expenses. We, we can't buy it for that amount of money and pass it on. Okay, all right. So there, there's no real risk then today. I mean, maybe if we keep building buildings like the clothes, you know, we're going to have need for a lot more water. But our residents, um, when the fire station was being discussed, made it very clear that, the residents who are here, made it very clear that they have no interest in purchasing water. We know the fire department wants it.
Mm-hmm.
And they're putting the pipes in, which is fabulous, to get that water. Um, do we know if, do we know if our residents are interested in it?
You have to, right now.
You don't know, but the radium issue may entice them to become interested.
Mm-hmm. I, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a real concern, obvious, obviously.
That they can avoid.
Yeah. And, and if and when we choose to do this, they have to shut off their wells. I believe, I believe I read that.
Referring to the neighborhood right behind.
That, that's just our well.
They already have a distribution system there in the community system.
Private, Chris, sure.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay.
Don't have a development go, who's seeking to build on Asta Kissick and eighty-three.
Yes.
Who have already indicated that they want.
Yep.
The water from Lake Michigan. Sorry to interrupt, but nobody was mentioning that, so.
We hadn't gotten it up, but, yeah.
Yeah, the belly money and property.
Yep.
And the South Fifteen would be on our water system too.
Which would then be Lake, Lake Michigan water, ultimately. Um, this seemed to be kind of a short-term, uh, insofar as costs, kind of a short-term contract. And once we hook up, once we've got that investment, we're kind of, there's not going to be a whole lot of negotiating. And I'm just asking what.
It's, it's a twenty-year contract, right?
Twenty-year contract. And this, the language in this contractor, IGA, um, is almost identical to the agreement that Buffalo Grove has with Lake County.
Okay. And Lake County has with Evanston. I, I, that's the, that's the change, is it not?
The Buffalo Grove gets the water from Evanston and the Northwest Water Commission, but the county, Lake County also buys water from Buffalo Grove, similar to how we would be doing.
I see, I see.
So, terms of the agreement, I mean, it's matching what the county has because they already have it. And Buffalo Grove doesn't want to.
Right.
Give us a different deal that they'll, the county will then renegotiate.
Yeah.
All those agreements and contracts run concurrently.
I see.
So ours doesn't run any longer than.
I see. Okay, got it.
Do you, do you have to follow the, the regulations and, and restrictions that Buffalo Grove gives to their citizens? Or do you now become regulators here in Long Grove? Uh, you may water on this day, you cannot water grabs, you cannot.
There's, there's nothing in this agreement that says that, that we have to follow Buffalo Grove's regulation. It's telling you no.
So you become the regulator?
Yes, yeah.
But it does give them the right to have limited water. I read that in here.
Yeah, so if there's like a major main break that, that limits the overall system capacity, everyone gets treated the same. So our water.
And if there's a drought, I, it specifically said they could have no wat- watering days would be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or whatever. It did, it's not that phraseology, but it, it was that they, they have control over those kinds of instances. And I'm, I'm presuming that that would be a major drought because they want people to use the water.
Yep.
Who cares if you drink it or put it in your lawn? They don't care.
So, so, um, did you have another comment? Or I was going to turn it back over to trustee?
Well, I, I only have one more question.
Yeah.
Um, these, these are municipal bonds that are being floated to finance the sys- not us, not, we're not.
Oh, no, yeah.
The bonds, the bonds behind the supplier. Okay, which are, I'm presuming municipal bonds and there's no state tax on municipal bonds in the state of Illinois.
I, yeah, how Buffalo Grove is financing their water system, so.
Well, it's, it's in here.
Oh.
The supply, the supplier, the supplier has issued bonds.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm, I'm just wondering, it, it's a very, very slim chance for you to be very clear. If one of the bonds were in default, do we have any liability if that should happen for whatever reason?
Should have been underwritten already and they would have, can you hear me?
We can, trustee Kritzmeyer.
Yeah, that should have been underwritten. When they, when they issued those bonds, Yeah, that should've been underwritten, when they, when they issued those bonds, they would underwrite, I don't, I didn't look at the bonds, but I assume that they are, the revenues for the water system are pledged against the bonds. So, our only liability is paying the bills that we contract for.
Yeah, you were saying, what if they can't-
What if they're in default?
They would not turn off a public water supply.
They can't, the state would not let.
Okay, so we don't have liability for, okay, all right, just, just asking.
Okay, back to you, trustee Chris Meyer.
No, it already got handled, I had sent a, a question to Chris earlier about the twenty-year term and what happens twenty-first year, so it got covered.
Okay.
So one more question on the price. So the document says that if we're over two hundred and sixty thousand gallons, um, we get an added ten cent per gallon charge on top of that. And I'm not sure if that's just for the overage, or if that's for everything, or whatever, so I don't know about that. But how do we pass that on to our consumers? Like, let's say the brewery decides to have a one hell of a party this weekend, makes a lot of beer. Like, how do we pass, we're gonna end up eating that overage, on or less, if pay that to Buffalo Grove. But then how do we pass that on to our users on meter?
I'll tell you what the bigger risk is, if it fired up some down, we're getting all the water.
It was ten cents per, I don't remember, per gallon, I thought.
Yeah, I read that, I thought it was per gallon also.
So how do we, we don't have variable billing, and order all metered, but if we're getting paid a premium, which is basically double the rate for that overage, how do we bill that to our consumer? How to hate the end of the water business?
Where was that, what page was that, Chris?
Yeah, I'm looking for it, I think it said the rate goes up to ten cents, referring to the previous rate of six whatever it was, for a thousand gallons.
Six point nine, yeah. Yeah, there's only like fifty pages, right?
I do remember reading that.
I think it's halfway through, 'cause I remember reading it on the, what I read this morning versus what I read this afternoon.
I can search by like point ten, I try. How about zero, one, one, zero?
I don't think they're measuring for paying, it'd be a monthly bill, right there. If we exceed the two cents.
Or whatever they, whatever that extra overage is, something to bill our-
Section forty-eight. Page forty-eight.
And does everybody, does everybody share that?
Can I read that out loud, out there?
Any usage by the purchaser of the village in excess of the maximum water supply shall be charged additional ten cents on the rate.
On the rate?
On the rate, and the rate is six something for a thousand gallons.
Six point seven.
They're gonna charge us ten cents more per thousand gallons?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. I'll shut up now.
If we exceed, if we exceed that number.
Is that right? Why would they even put that in the contract? What do they explain? I mean, that makes no sense.
Well, they filed the, the, the Lake County contract, so, must've been in there.
Big volume. If you're using more than this, you're using, using a lot of water.
Thank you for indulging me, I appreciate it.
Okay, so, um, we, trustee O'Reilly, do you have any comments you wanna make?
Not really at this time. Um, I will tell you that I have always been opposed to this, but that does not mean that I will not always be supportive of any issues that come up with Long Grove. So, if that makes sense.
Kind of, I think.
Okay, well, I will-
Wouldn't it even double the bourbon to figure that one out?
I, I will vote against the permitting, but I will, I will support all the issues around it.
Got it, so if it, if it passes, you'll be supportive of it?
Yes.
No comments, okay. So, um, we've gone around the horn, I don't know, uh, if there's support to, uh, to make a motion to approve? I think there is? But, uh, help me out, somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion for the resolution approving a water purchase and sale contract with the village of Buffalo Grove to obtain Lake Michigan water.
Okay, move by trustee Tanucci, seconded by-
Jeff.
By trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Barowski. No. Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Oh, you got the silent yes again.
So, aye is not working.
She needs a paddle.
Say it like three times, say it like, just keep saying it. That's weird. Oh, yeah, keep going, keep going, say it again.
All right, aye, it's funny, there we go, there we go. I see, in my thing, I, when it finally goes, I see it ringed in green.
Need a paddle, one side says yes, the other side no.
Okay. But hold, to, to, hold that thought, though, who's next on the vote?
Trustee O'Reilly.
Trustee O'Reilly.
No.
Okay, motion carried, go ahead now.
Well, maybe it's a little too late, but why is there not a conflict of interest here for trustee Chris Meyer? I mean, we, this is running pro, running water to her property, and she's included in this red box where sixty percent of us are. How is that different than our policy on the grant program for trustees who aren't yet eligible to just in the grant program? We were dropping two million dollars into this, it's enhancing the value of a particular trustee's property, how is this not a conflict of interest?
Well, she's not getting water right away.
Okay, but she's in the box, she can get water if somebody runs a pipe, right?
At, at a dis-
She pays her. Okay, but she's eligible to get water from Buffalo Grove, Lake Michigan, where Chris Barowski-
You wanna weigh in on this?
Um, I don't think that's really an actual conflict of interest in the sense-
Okay, so how is that-
Uh, direct benefit to her.
So how's that different than the grant program for the T-Sol and the Engraveses? Why are we not eligible?
I'm not familiar with that grant program, sorry, I have to get back to you on that.
Oh, you're not gonna get away with it?
Is she getting services that everybody in the neighborhood can get?
Right, she can obtain it, right.
Whereas with the grant, she would be getting specifically residual services and not the others?
But everybody's eligible for the grant gap.
Okay, so let me ask you this question, just to put this issue at rest, 'cause we don't know the answer to it. Would it help if, if I, just for effect, weighed in on this and voted?
No, it's already voted, I mean-
Okay, but if you wanted to take away the, that issue, right?
Not my decision.
Okay.
Trustee Chris Meyer's decision, not mine.
Okay.
Chris, I don't see it that way, but, um, you know, it, it is not an automatic enhancement to my property.
And she, what are you gonna have to pay to run the pipe from the street to your property?
Dude, I'm gonna pay like sixteen million dollars to run the pipe from my property to this well. All right, I don't imagine it's anywhere close to that, this is gonna be, if she gets ten neighbors, or the neighbors on Arlington Heights Road all get together and run a pipe, they're close.
She'll have to run, the pipe runs down Arlington Heights Road, I had a huge amount of disruption when they put a new pipe in. There's a sixteen-inch main that goes underneath part of my driveway. And we can't tap into that, we'd have to tap into Long Grove.
Okay, so, maybe what we do is take this offline, if there's any concerns, um, we, we're not hearing any.
No, we're not hearing any ethical concerns.
Yeah, I've been out of the loop for a while on this, but I, as I recall, at one point, the conversation was, we need to hook up before we lose our ability to hook up. Does that change?
No, we could lose our allocation if we don't accept it.
Okay, so, I think, from just a resident's standpoint, it seems like this is a good opportunity-
Yep.
-to do that. Uh, secondly, I don't know what's going on on the South fifteen, I think Lake Michigan water might attract other potential development there. I don't, I'm not gonna weigh in on what I think about Quick Trip, it's not my position or place to do so. I, and Lake Michigan water, I had, indicate that the overall positive to the village.
Yep, well, thank you, thank you, Chuck, for those comments. So, if you need a vote for me, I will go ahead and do it, but I don't think we do.
I don't think we do.
Okay, so, the motion is carried, and, uh, if there's any, if, if you can follow up afterwards, any concerns, then I guess we can revote, right? But it's motion carried.
We're still getting nine hundred and some odd thousand dollars.
We're getting, yeah, there is, there is also a grant, Congressman Shakowsky, almost a million dollar grant that she got, um, for it, so that helps us, too. But again, ju, the other thing is that, this is like one of the steps, if we choose not to use it, then we choose not to use it, right? But we now have the ability, the next part is gonna be figuring out all the capital costs-
You want something?
Put it in, you know?
And it is on the list of what, we did agree- I need water. Of, of goals, and, and what, what is it we're trying to accomplish here? That was, water was second or third on the list.
I, I concur that the board made that agreement. I'm not concur to that, I agree with that.
Understood, yes, I understand, I understand.
All right, um, we're gonna keep ourselves moving, we have the village engineer's report, um, and that would be village engineer Perry that's gonna take us through it.
All right, so, the engineer's report is in the packet, couple items I just wanna highlight, the village hall expansion, instructions on going, going, uh, pretty well right now. I walked through there the other day, drywall was up, muddied, taped, all that stuff, not in that order, you tape and then mudd- But, uh, and then lights are in, um, so it's, it's looking pretty good. The siding is, uh, up around here, they did run out, so if you look back there, uh, there is no siding, but, uh, we'll get that in a couple weeks, on, uh, back orders in a little bit. Um, jumping down to number five, this is the, the water that we just talked about, uh, the village did receive the, uh, grant agreement from the EPA, uh, last week, so-
Two.
Village manager and myself were working through, uh, getting that accepted, and, uh, all the paperwork, if you will, that goes along with that, it's a nightmare.
What, I'm sorry, I missed, I'm distracted with the, not being immune, what, what-
In order to get the money, we have to sign a grant.
Oh, okay, okay.
All kinds of stuff with the EPA.
Yeah.
ASAP portal.
Thank you, thank you, okay.
bureaucracy.
I'm good.
And then the, uh, the other item I just wanted to touch on is, uh, number nine, this is Arlington Heights Road, this is the county's project, um, I did get word, uh, that the, on Checker Road is going to be kind of first up as the, uh, the weather breaks. And the widening on Checker Road is going to result in the road being reduced to one lane between the church access and Arlington Heights Road, so it's at first, it's called five hundred feet. Um, and it's going to be eastbound traffic only. So, we're gonna start with the widening on the north side of the road and the south side, but during both of those, it's going to be eastbound only. So, um, I'm trying to get exact dates, um, as the weather, uh, breaks a little bit from the county, and I will certainly share those when they know.
Yeah, we'll put it out via constant contact and on our-
Can we get the speed bumps in again?
Yes, soon.
'Cause if we're flo, if we're pushing towards, it's only eastbound, that's-
That the, the speed tables and the, uh, pylons will go back up.
And we're almost done with snow?
Yeah.
If anything falls down, we'll help quickly.
Yes. I do remember a snowstorm in April, so.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Um, that, those are the, the ones I wanted to highlight, certainly there's other things in through here, so if you have any questions, happy to, uh, take those.
Okay, any other questions?
What do they mean, the sewers on Robert Parker?
You have it on note here.
Land, land, March fourteenth, for sanitary-
Oh, the, uh, Chatterbox had to do an emergency repair on their system.
Ah.
And they had a spaghetti system previously with the, uh, it connected through the old, um, store at the-
Not, not Chatterbox, uh, Stock Monkey.
Stock Monkey, no, sorry. Stock Monkey, yes.
Okay.
So, um, they were able-
Yeah, they've had that problem for a while.
Yep.
Yes.
So instead of fixing the old problem, they tied directly into the sanitary line that Lake County has along Old McHenry.
I see.
It was a, it's a big improvement.
Okay, so are we done? Um, next item on the agenda is discussion of the twenty-five, twenty, fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six village budget. So, oh, Chris is passing out a document. Uh, let me find mine, I know I got it.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, Chris.
All right, so, did you just hand out a wish list or something?
Yeah.
Yes.
These are the items that I received.
So, how do you wanna proceed, um, tonight? So we had an initial preview of the budget at a high level at the last meeting. Um, now we're gonna hash through it, it's line item detail, but there's also things that people asked to be put into the budget, right? I don't know how you wanna proceed with that, so.
Stare digitally?
I emailed it to you, Anne.
Oh, I have not seen it yet, okay.
Um, I can, want me to read the list off, or how do you want me to do it?
The front page are the new items for this year, the second page is, and distributed last fiscal year as previous projects, some of which we've actually already completed. I just wanted to include that as backup material for you guys.
So, all right, we'll just, so, uh, we'll just read through them really quick, because, uh, just so everyone's aware, what we're looking at, we're looking at this miscellaneous project list. One of them is new branding and paint colors, I think this is for signage around the village. Uh, somebody, uh, brought up pickleball courts, gradual replacement of dead trees along Route eighty-three, a new village hall's entry sign at Old McHenry Road, a park in the downtown for small kids, continued funding for pathways, a hundred thousand dollars for this year, this coming fiscal year, I should say. Um, this is, the, what, next one is the HOA road paving program, they put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a placeholder into the program, which is my ask. And the last one is allocation for potential future village acquisitions, which probably needs an explanation, I think that might, from trustee O'Connor. Those are the items, so I don't know how to best go about discussing these items. I don't either. Uh, well, let me, let's start with the last one, so the allocation of potential, uh, for future village acquisitions, don't we have open space funding for that?
Lake Park for children.
But couldn't you buy, um, let's say you wanna buy a property somewhere, um, couldn't we use the open space funds to buy the property, even if it has a house on it? Somebody wanna answer that, or do we need?
Would you, would you take that?
Vic usually has the, Vic usually has the tightest answer on the restrictions on open space. We can use the open space money, I think, to buy land, we can't do any improvement.
Correct, but I think the, the thing was, um, this was to buy future property, right? And it may have a structure on it, right? So that probably needs to be explained, yeah. Yeah.
What did we use when we bought the-
Open space funds.
Bought the lot.
For the wa, that we're using for the water, it was open space funding.
Didn't, that had a house on it that we-
It did.
-teared down, did it not?
We had to tear down the house.
And did, and did that money get re-in inserted into the open space?
No, I think the tear down was a separate cost, right? It was a separate cost for the tear down, but we bought a property with the open space funding.
I see. But that's village owned, it's not, it's not open space.
It's village-owned property.
Now, it's-
Yeah, it is, right, and it's gonna be used, um, George was on the board at the time, right? So, um, and it's-
Right.
Yeah, we bought the house so that we would, we'd have an ac, access for Buffalo Grove water, which we just approved tonight, so, that's all the water's gonna get.
Correct, correct, yes, I remember that.
Yeah.
But do we also have open space, that's a soccer field?
Right.
It's open space.
Right.
So, um, how, how was open space defined during your vision?
We took the money and, I don't think we spent it.
No, we used it to buy the-
Used the house.
The house, yeah, yeah.
That was the only time we spent money.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been, well, there's been minimal stuff, didn't we, didn't we buy a piece of property with open space funding for the exit from the simple lot?
Yes.
So, we've done a couple little things, but nothing major.
Very minimal dollar.
Yeah, right.
Maybe we should make time that we, we define that definition, perhaps.
Yeah, or we get-
I'm not, I'm, I'm not opposed or for anything.
Yeah, well, we're just trying to address-
When oppo, when opportunities arise, I, I, I don't wanna have, I, I think it would be unfortunate if we said, "Well, we haven't allocated anything for that in the budget, where's it gonna come from?" You know, we've got X in general funds, we have X here, we have Y there, that, I, I think there should be- You know, we've got X in general funds, we have X here, we have Y there, that, I, I think there should be, I would like, or maybe it would be helpful for us to have, how those funds can be tapped. Are, are they just taken out, or do they, are they borrowed? And there's, there's gonna be interest on the money, like the TIF funds.
Yeah, I, I.
We used money for the TIF fund.
And we need to get the pure definition of it, but my understanding is that money that comes from impact fees that we borrowed against can be used to buy land and buy property. So, so I was thinking that this kind of aligned to that, but all the caveats, I'm not the attorney of record, but we should get those out on the table, right?
And I'll just add that there are very specific legal definitions of open land.
Right.
And very specific legal limitations on how the money can be spent, and at least part of that comes from one specific court case. Which our attorney's gonna find it.
Yeah, we can get further clarification.
Well, one case does not, you know, doesn't make a trend.
So will you take that, um, Alexander, will you take that back to, for our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Give a more clear understanding of how open space funding can be used, which comes from the impact fees.
Correct.
When homes are being built, yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
Cause years ago, when, when we bought, we had to contribute, I think it was five hundred dollars to the park district, you know, every, every, every whatever.
I remember reading this, yeah, cause they get a piece of it too.
Right.
And I just, I mean, it's going back now, like the last time I read it was like three or four years ago, I haven't read it recently.
So how that gets sent to the park district actually changed since Dave last.
Correct, well, and, and.
Website and.
During Dave's time, cause he was here for so long.
Look up, uh.
Back in the day.
The language on.
It was very different.
How the open space funds can be used.
Found and developed quickly.
Back then, when I was president of the park district, the park district would occasionally get a check from the village for a portion of the open space fund. But now it's run a little differently, it has to be done and reimbursed in taxes, the first is being expensed.
And maybe that, and maybe that should be.
Spend that money, I mean, it's, it went into an account. Opening its open space purchases.
Maybe that should be revisited as well, you know, I mean, they scrimp and they save and they get donations and, you know, they have volunteers, which I think is fabulous, not as many as we do.
Okay, that comes, it's in our village code, how it can, it's written right in it.
What's the?
He's, he's not finding it quickly, so.
Okay, all right.
All right, well, so.
We don't have to do it tonight.
But anyways, it's, to answer your request, we need to understand how and what you really mean by that, as far as what you wanna buy. Um, if it's just property, like to acquire some lots that could be used for future development, I think the open space funds can be used, if that's what you're thinking about. Yeah.
You know, it's, for me, it's pathway or opportunity. You know, you never know when the opportunity is gonna fall in your lap. We have two of them, as far as I'm concerned now, one is a big ticket item, the other's a mini ticket. But I, 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 I think that they are opportunities and, and I, we, it'd be great if we could set monies aside for these kinds of opportunities. Doesn't mean we have to use it, but it would be good to have it.
Yeah, we'll look into that. The other items, I'm just looking for general board concurrence on, to advance them, to figure out pricing for the projects as quickly as we can, or to put a placeholder in, but I just wanna get a pulse of the board on what to include for next year's.
I will, I will say that Jeff, me, Vic, and Chris met to talk about how we would be able to do the HOA road paving program. So there is a path to do it, and it would be a grant program, probably be more needs based, but I am asked to leave it in the budget, and it's something that we can be, it's something that can be done and worked through. We met and talked about, it's just putting it all together, Vic's not here tonight to talk about it, but he can talk about it at the next meeting, and how we might be able to do that.
As I recall, we, you asked us about that, and the response is pretty much was, give us something to work with.
Right.
You know, there's, there's, there's no framework, there's no.
Correct.
Room number one, two, or three, so that's, that's what you're working for, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we're working, I was asking that a year ago, I'm asking it again, they, Vic is going to put that together for us, he, he has a path to do it.
And, and just parenthetically, when we made the list of projects that we considered, I think it was a top, and you and I were, and Greg worked on that, the list of projects and the priorities and such.
Projects, yes.
Oh, you.
Not, not the, not the ones Chris just handed out, those were last year, but with Greg, a couple of years ago, we had a, like, ad hoc capital project.
Oh, the spreadsheet, Ann, with all the colors?
Probably. It was Jeff, Rita, me, yeah, it was an ad hoc capital project, what's on the list and what's the priority?
Right, and it.
It's not this list, it's a different one.
No, it was, uh, Village Hall, and it was, um.
Water.
Well, like Michigan water.
And our.
Yeah, the HOA, excuse me, the HOA thing was not on the list, I'm just wondering, is it gonna go on the list? Are we ignoring the list?
So the way we.
You don't know about the list, right?
Well, the list was from a while ago, so.
Yeah.
I think the way we envisioned it was it'd be set up like its own fund, like the pathway fund, and money would be.
Understand.
Selected annually to be inserted into that.
Yeah, I, and I, and I understand that, I do, it goes back to what we've been talking about, and now that Village Hall's almost done, it would be nice if we could sit down and say, here's our list, here are the things we deem important, and this is where we wanna be going.
With new board, Bill.
But, yeah, I know, so we're gonna have, we will be having a workshop as soon as the new board is seated. Um, so, you know, right now, the thing that we, so the thing that we have to get done here, so that we're not gonna be like the federal government, we don't wanna shut down, we have to approve a budget by our second meeting in April. So whatever we do, we, that's what we have to do, so.
Regarding the park in downtown for small kids, that could be one project between the park district, the village, and the HBLGVA, where each contributes.
Oh, we, um, we lost trustee O'Reilly, I know that she did her best to be here for most of the meetings, so that was her idea, so we're probably gonna have to, yeah.
I think she's envisioning a place for, you know, little playground where kids, where families come into town, the kids can play. I don't know if that would be the existing park, right by the, uh, three-way.
There's no place that, that it could potentially go there, that could be the physical location for it.
It'd be cool, it was near the fountain.
Is there a way to duplicate that outside of downtown, and maybe north of twenty-two?
That too.
Lemon Hill. I know, Lemon Hill's a great place for that, and pickleball courts, but I'm not sure what the park board's feeling is on either.
Where would pickleball courts be?
I know, I think it's, it's a number of dollars.
Lemon Hill Park.
We need that out, do we not, to the.
I'm, I'm not sure what the current status is, I think they have some.
Softball, yeah.
No, but it's, the park district owns it, right?
Yeah.
Right, right.
Owns Lemon Hill, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they own it, and then they, they lease it out, right?
There's a license, yeah.
License, yeah.
Lemon Hill's a great place or something like.
But so you have to have an operator to maintain it and everything else like that.
I understand that, but that's maybe what budget planning is for, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, you know, Heron Creek has that, the forest preserve has that huge play area for kids, which is really nice, because, you know, it takes everything up to twelve-year-olds, from what I've observed there. But something like that would be nice elsewhere, you know, we've got young families moving in here, they're having babies, thank God, you know, it would be, I think it would be a huge plus. And, and why not somewhere here, where you get more, more attraction, more draw?
I don't, I don't.
Maybe there's room for it on the South fifteen, whoever does.
I think it should be duplicated, that's my point, I, I think.
I mean, frankly, from, from up north, downtown's a long way.
Yep.
It really is.
Sure.
You know, it's a long way. It'd be nice to see something up north, too.
Sure.
Does anyone have an idea what it costs to install a pickleball court?
Pickleball court?
Yeah. We should ask Royal Melbourne.
Ask the Buffalo Grove Park District.
Um, we can.
Winter Park Harbor just did it, it was how much?
How many?
How many courts?
Yeah, how many?
One court, one little court.
Without a million?
No.
Forty grand.
Say that again?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand. Oh, I thought you said four hundred fifty.
Well, I'm glad my boat tax is being used for a good cause.
It was actually a grant, a grant for what?
Can we get grants for that, too?
Yeah, it just.
Try.
Where would we put it? If we're leasing, if we're.
Lemon Hill.
If we're leasing that out, how can, how can you do that?
People lease the ball fields out, doesn't mean we can't pave over some of the grass or.
Right.
Between the outfield, there's nothing there, that outfield's not used in the middle of the fences. I don't know what the terrain looks like, I don't know.
It's a good shit.
You know, but between the fences, that land is just, cut grass.
No, as I understand it, the property that's just to, I guess, the west of it, probably the direction's wrong, fire department owns.
Fire department, right.
Yeah.
Countryside, yeah.
Countryside owns that property.
Who's it barned?
Um, I don't think.
How well the field is, to the way.
Oh, 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 towards the.
Yeah.
Yeah, why they lose all the baseballs?
Oh, so there might be a spot in the back or somewhere in the front.
They're gonna land east of the ball field before routing through.
Yes.
So if there's general sentiment.
Mushy though.
It'll be nice to even see if the park district wants to have that discussion.
That land's kinda mushy, isn't it?
If you stay closer to where the garage and the storage is, it's not as mushy.
Okay, so, is there any consensus?
I was gonna say, would the school district ever consider pickleball courts, too?
I don't know.
Like on their property where the solar panels?
I was gonna say, hit the ball off the solar panel. They bounce really nice.
But there's, there is empty land there, I, I.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know that that would.
Anyway.
Okay. Okay.
Royal Melbourne put them in recently.
Correct, it did, too.
So they grow.
Two or four?
Two.
They have some other ones where it's grounded.
They did, they did on four, four panel pens.
Panel pens, yeah.
Okay, so we, so we have to somehow, like, this is still like the budget discussion, so how do we get, somebody wants to put some money in there, I don't know if you put a placeholder, what would that amount be, twenty thousand, forty thousand, just a?
For pickleball.
For pickleball, just to put it there, and it's like one of those that has to be TBD.
Outdoor recreation.
Yeah.
You know.
Would any, would everyone here, would you say, yes, we'll?
Twenty thousand, twenty-five or thirty, forty each year to build it up, or?
Oh, just to start this year with, the idea that we may wanna put a pickleball court in somewhere, let's put a placeholder in the budget, and a lot of work's gotta be done.
Yeah, I'm with, I'm with.
So whatever that dollar amount is, forty thousand, you tell me twenty?
Dana, you're saying forty-four?
Are you okay if we do that, just for the budget, doesn't mean we have to do it, we still have to approve it? Um.
Yeah, placeholder, why not?
Placeholder, okay.
Why not?
All right, so that's, that's that, what about the, keep going, let's get the other ones. What about gradual placement of dead trees along Route eighty-three?
How many?
Starting from the north is what I heard.
From north to south.
How many are dead?
I'm gonna go all of them.
How many are left?
Why'd they die? Is it too much salt, too much?
Okay, so that's a good question, so didn't we have a committee that was trying to do this, right? What happened to this?
That's right, they've seen the corridor, cause they were working on that, that's right.
Test plant somewhere.
That's right, that's right.
And they're pushing them to try to do something, I mean, it's free.
That's correct.
I don't know what ever happened to that, the little test plant thing.
Right.
There's also studies, that's right, I, uh, I, not the tanning yard, no, what, the arboretum in terms of trees, and, uh, salt and, and all of that.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I heard, I know, yeah.
Well, some of the basic stuff is like taking care of, watering them.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't do anything.
That was the original problem.
Yeah, we got excess water, I'm told.
Well, and, and, and actually.
At the truck.
Dude, I'm tired.
Has water trucks.
Yeah, we got a trailer.
Handle snow.
I, I have no idea, I mean, cause you have, if you start small, there's, there's nothing, so do you, is anyone okay with throwing a little bit of money in the budget? Needs to be studied for potential trees on Route eighty-three, what is that dollar amount?
Of twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, do I hear twenty thousand going once?
Do I hear twenty-five, do I hear thirty?
Do you hear thirty?
Beautification of some sort, I like.
I think it's part, I think it's part of a larger thought that says, you know, the main corridor, one of the main corridors in our village looks terrible, and I think that's fair. I think it'd also look to be, you know, we've also got a couple of, like, let's call it blighted properties, slowly, in my eight years, that some of them have gone away, but, you know, that's also a contributor to, Route eighty-three looks kinda crappy.
Yep. All right, so we'll put some money in the budget for that, everyone's okay, whatever, it's twenty or twenty-five thousand, um.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, in, in Libertyville, they have some beautiful parklands, you know, it's so nice to have a parkway in the middle of the street anyway, yes. You know, they've done a fabulous job, and maybe they would give us some.
I can tell you one resident that you all know, Rick Scardino, very well, that's what he wants, so.
Yeah.
But he wants to buy his house.
Wow, but, but I.
And Rick Sorry, if you're listening.
I think they gave some tips on how they did it, and I think we can get grants as well.
Yeah.
Those are still available, cause they're local, grants.
All right, so, so we, we can put a little bit of money in for that, uh, for now, um, I don't know about the new Village Hall sign on Old McHenry Road, I didn't think there was anything wrong with that little sign, so, but you guys.
That would be so minor, right, we're not talking about some nature, are we?
Right, I have no idea, so.
Who's, who, who brought?
I think that was Bobby, she's not here now, she, you know, she's trying to get all her strength back and everything.
But the sign matches all the other signs, that was the idea.
Right.
You know, the, cause we have signs like.
Yep, all right, so maybe that needs to be explored more about what it is, right?
Didn't mention the paths from the other two lots.
It's not on here, I know that she would like it. Um, so wait, look at the easy one, so everyone's good with funding the money for the pathways, right? Yes? Yes, so.
Is that your grant?
Yes.
I want, I want pathways in the north part of town, and I want one along eighty-three.
I, I, I love you, Ann.
On the bridge over.
So towards, towards that end, Rita, when, when is, could maybe come back to us and say, voila, here's our vision, like, I know you guys have been working on it, I know there's been maps buried in that closet for thirty years.
There were, I don't think there are.
We have a vision, we just got a vision.
When do we get to share in your vision?
We don't have my report yet.
Okay, fair enough, I'll shut up. But that's part of the discussion, right? So it's easy to say, let's put a hundred grand in, but a hundred grand, a bridge to where, right? The bridge to nowhere, or the bridge to actually get the stuff?
Bridge or pathway?
Well, it's, it's facetious, I keep thinking about the Anchorage, Alaska expenditure of the bridge to nowhere, that was gonna cross the Gulf of Alaska and go nowhere.
We could have a bridge from the east side of eighty-three to the west side of eighty-three, is that specific enough?
So I highly recommend, start putting money away in a budget for pathways so that we have it, once we see the plan.
I think we should, Bill, I agree with that, but I think the plan should be concurrent with that.
Correct, yeah.
Piling money in the bank going, eh, maybe we'll never get to this, to this plan.
We, we had, we used to, back in the day, as trustee, we used to put the fifty grand a year, and we put it in the pathway fund, and we did, you know, make a, you know, few investments there, um, but it was hard, cause you need, usually need a lot more money than fifty grand, right? Those pathways are expensive, so if we start investing, we'll get there.
I don't disagree, so let me re-ask the question, when are we gonna see the, kind of the output of the committee? That's early.
You can hear it tonight if we can stay awake long enough.
Thank you.
Us to get to that part of it.
We're putting together a, yeah, planning.
Okay, so how do we?
The continuate, continuation, it's not a finished product, but I'm having.
I, I don't know what to do with the new branding and paint color, so that probably needs more thought, too, right?
I think the village needs rebranding, I don't, I don't know about paint color, I didn't talk about paint color.
Yeah, that was not you, but this, this was trustee O'Reilly, she's not here to talk about it, so, um, park in the downtown, that's another.
Let's think back.
What?
Rebranding. We talked about...
Yeah.
Talked about rebranding for two years now.
Yep. So you want rebranding in here, so...
I, 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 well, I don't want to be, I'm not the only one, I don't think, am I?
We don't have the staff to do it right now. We, we've, we've put them in nine ways from Sunday.
Say it again?
We have, our, we have not had stable staff, and the ones we do have, have, we've sent them in lots of directions.
Right, but we have, we have in-house people who know about branding, and we could put out an RFQ for others.
You want to hire a consultant?
I'm not sure. I agree, we have people in-house who know about branding, but, okay.
Uh, well, the people that do the, the, uh, Facebook and, and LinkedIn and stuff, I think they do that kind of work. I'm not sure.
All right, you and I, you and I will disagree on knowing branding, then.
Well, oh, okay, oh, I, I, I under, and I understand where you're coming from, and I, I don't disagree with you. You know, but we could at least look into how much something like this would cost.
Yeah.
Other, other towns have come into the twenty-first century.
We can get costs.
Okay. So is everyone okay putting a placeholder, I don't know, is it fifteen thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars for branding? Nope.
Not enough.
That's, that's like, that's like a nickel.
Okay.
Like a nickel, yeah. Because you need to advertise, right? It's not just about painting the sign blue instead of gray. You're gonna have to advertise it, come up with a theme and...
Right.
Occurring expenditures, trying to get that message out. I hate using the word rebranding. I like the word improving, or bolstering, or changing, I don't know. But rebranding, I get it, but...
So you're saying that you would be supportive of something?
Yeah, I would. We, we, we should do something.
Okay.
We need to kind of come into the twenty-first century.
Okay.
And it kind of sits on a path of your workshop of what does the board want the village to stand for?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so I don't know how we come up with a dollar amount, but you've got something there. It sounds like there's some consensus, right? Uh, so we got that, pickleball, dead tree.
Oh, I will say, I did add the pathway on the Archer lot in the actual budget documents.
Okay.
And I...
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I thought it was so small, we had agreed with Jeff.
I, I put it in for twenty grand.
Okay. So did we cover all these? Did we give you direction? Yes.
Downtown park is an intriguing idea, but I think it needs more, I, I really think it would only work if the park district and the HDL GBA are on board.
Yep.
Well, doesn't, um, the ownership of Archer is, um...
Move in.
May be able to have a spot for something like that also.
Of course, we're trying to develop that, but yes.
I know. That's what I'm saying. It could be part of, part of that.
Yep.
Somehow.
Depends on what they build it, but...
And it could be, whoever develops the South fifteen, it could be there as well.
Right. Oh, yeah, no, that came to mind, too. The other one that the HDL GBA wants to add parking in the downtown, um, and I believe that they want to lease land, um, from the park district, and they want to do it, uh, better, right behind the village tavern, or however you want to put it, down that, that area right there.
Well, yeah, there's like, there's like two...
Um, no, what's, what's the name of the, um, the park there? It's a Buffalo Creek...
Buffalo Creek Park.
Park.
The currently paved area just south of Buffalo Creek Park is actually not park district land.
But they want to go into the park district land and fill the parking lot in there.
There's like, what, two, three acres back there?
Yeah.
Um...
Well, you're not on the park district anymore, yeah, but you...
True, that's why I'm not saying anything.
(laughing).
If I was there, that wouldn't happen.
No, but they need, there, there's a parking problem, right? So they wanted to, to do something, and they may want a contribution from the village, so that may require more thought.
Could the, uh, village board be amicable to do a cost-sharing program for compost bins? Where, um, we would co-sponsor, uh, compost bins for the residents? We used to have a compost bin sale. We have brought them into the parking lot here, and you come in and pick up the bins.
Oh, yeah, those black jobbies.
Black jobbies.
Yeah.
Because right now, those detail are running like a hundred fifty bucks a piece. Now the big black jobbies at the Home Depot. I don't know what Swaco's pricing is on them, but we do like a fifty percent for like a couple hundred bins, like fifteen thousand dollars worth of bin.
That'd be a great Earth Day project.
We haven't done that in years and years and years.
And we used to be environmentally conscious and forward and emphasizing, and I don't see or hear it anymore.
So like a hundred fifty dollars a bin divided by two, and we sell two hundred on a...
What does Amazon sell?
A fifty-fifty program, or we buy...
Yeah.
Cover, cover fifty percent of the cost?
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, I'm not sure what the Amazon price was, but I saw them at Home Depot for a hundred fifty bucks.
Okay.
So I don't know what Swaco pricing is. It's an email, I guess, because you know, a break down.
Be a similar thing for electric mowers, too, some kind of rebate for fifty.
Oh, electric?
Maybe Menards could give us a deal.
Oh, my God, you're a... Okay, so do we have, um...
We, everybody needs a big green Menards.
I have a good idea.
You have a good idea. Now, is there anything that, in this huge budget, that Chris was trying to make me copy? Did anyone go through it? Does anyone have any comments about it?
Happy to see the Christmas light there. Um, there's one thing I can't remember what it was you guys maybe talked about.
I mean, there's some minor things that Chris is working on correcting, um, how our accountant does things and names things, right? So some of those things will get fixed or changed. Debbie does a great job, of course, but Debbie does it Debbie's way, right? So, right, Anne?
So, I don't know if you talked about it last time, Debbie and Greg are retiring. Debbie, Debbie's Greg. They're retiring, and they've been under market for a long time. So Chris and I talked about, we're gonna have to replace their stuff. We talked about that with payroll. But we're gonna pay more than Debbie and Greg Seidler to replace them.
And you've got that in the budget, though, right? Oh, I have a, I want to bring up something, just, uh, if I can, um, and maybe you're okay with it, but we have money allocated for Route fifty-three, so it's slightly less because we, so, I mean, everyone okay if we, even though we've all responded this year, we still allocate fifty thousand dollars? Anyone have a problem with that?
Is that a realistic number?
It's probably little. It's probably on the shy side.
This is money to oppose Route fifty-three in an effort to, uh, work to convert it now into a green space, right? So... I know that I, I talked to Chris about the cost of, we, you're the person I want to ask. What is it really gonna cost us to do this parking lot out here?
This one?
Yes. You need to give us a better number.
We got it in there?
Gotta be...
The cost of what it, the amount that it took us to repave Stubble. Four hundred thousand dollars. That's crazy. Yes, so...
It includes the widening of the entryway, though, too. I threw everything in there till we...
Oh, yeah.
So if you, I mean, we can come back and get that fixed, too, because that's in the, in that budget.
Yeah, we'll clean that up.
But that's what Stubble parks.
What is gravel?
Parks?
How much is gravel?
Well, we talked about it, but I got shot down last, at the last meeting on the gravel. I said, just put some gravel over here for the extra parking spots, remember?
He did get shot down. I just can't see, like, on a rainy night, it's very, you know, even...
And it's downward sloping and...
Yeah, it's just not...
You do not bring it up, because I said it, I've said it already.
Park district had a gravel park, had a returner, and it was awful.
I know.
Well, I think all our parks, all our parking lots used to be gra, gravel, right? Wasn't Archer Lot gravel before, was the Archer Lot?
And there used to be fifty-five gallon drums of salt in the middle of the road.
Yeah. Is there any, does anyone else have anything on this budget to go through right now?
Remember the other one that I saw, the total removal, so that's a budget.
Yep. We, we just have to get this budget passed, um, by the end of April, so...
How much, what size is our budget this year?
Oh, we had that yet, last meeting. What was the total amount?
I think they're including the, you know, the Villachal and...
We have total expenses for the year, four point eight. Operating is four million. Special funds, three point six. Total, seven point six.
Special funds are capital...
You're looking at EY.
That's right.
You said four point nine.
Four million operating expense, three point six. Special funds, which includes infrastructure change based on the conversation tonight, um, for a total of seven point six million.
So there was, the infrastructure had what in December thirty? Was that water?
Uh, yeah, some Villachal carryover water, the road program, um...
How much over?
The Archer path and Archer Lot drainage, Villachal parking lot. Really exciting office furniture for the new Villachal placeholder.
Well, the thing was, is we were running a, um, under, um, the operating revenue, right? So the special funds are the ones that have grants and other things in there, right?
What, what are we at? We...
Yeah, we went over last week, so, um...
Want to share your screen, or... It's in the sheet.
It's cell version, but I'm, what it, what was in the, um, PDF version?
The summary, the summary, EYE, and the budget sheets.
Yeah, so the summary one, so the summary one has general fund, that's the operating. So the keep the lights on is four million, and the general fund is taking in four point eight million in revenue, so that's got excess? And the special...
That's the excess, we could move to the infrastructure funds, for example.
Yep, and pathways and other things like that.
Yep.
How, how much, how, how, how much is the addition at this time?
What's left of it?
Just, approximately.
Uh...
I know what it started at.
I have to crunch those. We've paid a good portion. We've paid over a million dollars, um, out of the ARPA fund, so we haven't even hit the infrastructure fund yet.
I, I think it costs more daily than I'd say.
Costs more daily?
Well, now we're looking at half a mil for a parking lot.
It's not gonna be that much.
Four fifty.
No, not, no, it's gonna, it's gotta be a, if I'd be surprised if it's more than two hundred thousand dollars to do everything, in my opinion, but I'm not an engineer, so...
No, I was...
You're not in order of magnitude.
Yes.
I was hoping for that, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, as Chris said, he had to widen the entryway, which is probably pretty expensive. Uh, this is probably a grind and resurface, not a full reclamation, and then we're have to add, we're talking about adding parking spots to, to the east, and then, um, something over here, right? We're gonna augment a little bit over, right, where people are parking on the grass. Yeah, okay. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so we're, are we at a stopping point right now on the budget? Or we have more questions? We're gonna have to all come together and get this done, so... Maybe what we do at the next time we bring up the budget, we have a presentation about where we're at, at it, and just make sure everyone knows and re-levels that, because two weeks go by and I think, um, some of this gets lost, right? So...
I'll plug in. Okay.
All right?
Approximately a million and overage.
For what?
Kind of, sorta.
Well, we're under budget, but...
Right.
Um... So it's just the, you know, it's just all the, you know, we'll have to dig into, uh, trustee, uh, Kritzmeyer, Kentucky, we'll have to dig into our reserves to fund Lake Michigan water and things like that, so, which we have the reserve.
Why is it here?
We have the money in the infr, yeah, yeah. You chose the la, last year's budget to transfer the money to cover the Lake Michigan project from the general fund to the infrastructure fund.
Oh, so it's already there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so let's stop there. Let's, um, if you're okay with that, I'll keep us moving. We have, um, the village president trustee reports. I'm gonna have no reports. Trustee Broowski, do you have a report?
No.
Trustee Jamil?
No.
Uh, trustee Kritzmeyer, do you have a report? Trustee O'Connor?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes, okay, so we had another pathways meeting, and, um, we, the, the, believe it or not, the question was, do we, we have these pathways all over town. The issue is they don't connect, pathways to nowhere. Um, and the biggest thing for the book for connectivity purposes to get, I'm, I'm, I think we assumed, or we guessed, parenthetically, is that maybe two-thirds of our residents live southern and one-third northern. Would you agree with that?
Of what?
Approximately, of the village.
Oh, I know.
You know, that the density would... Okay, so, 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 to, in recognition of that and the fact that we need connectivity, you know, our, our, our biggest restroom is up Old McHenry Road from Robert Parker Coffin to the school. And two years ago, that was a million dollars without any insurance. But it may, it, it makes sense when you look at it from a bird's eye. HOAs have, some of them have pathways that are public, and some of them, they're private. They, they're nice to take the dog for a walk, but they don't accommodate runners, they don't accommodate moms with, moms and dads with strollers, they don't accommodate off carts, they don't accommodate people that use walkers. You know, for, for years, we had cobblestones in the downtown, and we finally addressed that, and they're smooth surface. So it, it makes sense to us to, for, if you look at where the pa, like, there's a pathway on Schaefer. You know, if you're brave and you cross Old Fifty-three, you get into downtown, you can wiggle to sunset, you can wiggle north, but it's not safe, nowhere near being safe. So if we could get from Robert Parker Coffin up to Heron's Creek, that, that's a long way. That's nice for runners, and there, there are, are outlets between that. Eighty-three, you can go under still, you know, but you end up in Stonehaven. Um, we, we looked at all of it, and, and it seemed like if, if we could get that big chunk done, maybe we could find some interior easements from residents that would maybe let people run through Mardana State, walk through bikes or whatever, to, to get from that dangerous part of the roads of, of Fifty-three. Wiggle up through, you, you can wiggle up through, through Country Club Estate and go to that forest preserve, and, but you still have to get back to the park, where it's unsafe. So, uh, so that's, that's what we arrived at this last time, was bird's eye view, this would make most sense.
Where, where would the path go?
Robert Parker Coffin to twenty-two.
Oh, all the way from Robert Parker Coffin, all the way to twenty-two, because twenty-two will then, when the state, whenever they do it, there will be sidewalks or pathways there.
That pathway, yes.
Yeah.
We could look at Kruger to go further.
Kruger's another safety issue. Now, they're gonna build that entire intersection, it's gonna be, what, six feet high at, at the, the land?
Actually, it's...
Board of... Say it again? Say it again?
Actually lower than Kruger Road from Twenty-two.
The road, but that, at the intersection, there, there's an elevation gonna, on the, um.
Oh, cause it gets wide and they'll have retaining walls. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just remembering the diagrams from.
And that's a very, you know, we, we did the paving grind two years ago of Kruger.
Yeah, the first from Twenty-two to Kruger Court, yep.
Yes.
The state was gonna tear it up.
Yes, correct, and, and even, even after that, there's no safe way to walk, bike or run on Kruger to get up to Gilmer, Diamond, Rodent.
Yeah, just that narrow pathway, but, um, further up, that is safe because we have those big shoulders, right, so.
At the field?
Yeah, at the field, yeah.
Between that and, and Twenty-two, it gets kinda scary.
Right.
Because it does one of these things, can't, it's coming at you, so blah, blah, blah. Is that, does that help?
Yeah, it does.
We determined, we determined that.
Okay. You, okay?
End of report.
Are you okay? Like, I, I don't know, I think I just heard trustee, uh, O'Connor say that the focus is gonna be on the south half of Long Rock. That's what I just.
No, no.
Up to Twenty-two, that doesn't do me any good, right?
But from, from Twenty-two, that's, once the sidewalk is in, from the state on the south side of Twenty-two, which we know, we've been waiting for forever, up Kruger, up Kruger to the school, to, it, to try to get, to try to get at least from there to the school. It makes very little sense for us to put in another pathway. Starts here and stops here, but there's no connection. But we have children who theoretically could walk or bike to school if there was a safe way to do it. And it makes no sense to start that now when they're gonna tear up Kruger and Twenty-two.
Okay, do you have any idea on what budget looks like or what the cost of all that?
Yeah, I know, yes, we have to get, we have to get a grant. Um, two years ago, it was a million dollars from Robert Parker Coffin up to the forest preserve.
Right.
So.
Oh, way more in double.
Yeah.
But with the grant, like, that's how we did one on Robert Parker Coffin and that's how we've done several of them. With the grant, could be that, that isn't that kind of a number from Village Coffers.
So you're gonna give us a, a formal presentation on this in a coming meeting, is that right?
Yeah, we're, we're working on it, we're working on.
So why don't we wait to get more details at that time?
We're working on the map.
Okay, all right. Any report? All right, good job, thank you. Trustee Tanishi. Nothing? All right, village manager Sparkman. Okay, so, um, I would like a motion to go to executive session, session to discuss personnel.
It's almost.
By trustee O'Connor. Or by trustee Barowski, uh, call, please.
Hi.
Mr. Barowski?
Hi.
Neil, uh, you lock that door. You lock that door when you leave?
I.
Lock the door?
Yeah. Leaving.
Okay, motion carried.
Seven thousand.
Seventy thousand a pickle?
Yeah. For fifty, at the line, plus giving up another. Seventy thousand. Uh, it's actually four pickleball courts, so that, uh, sounds a lot, so.
We've been doing recreation for sixteen years.
Still expensive, yeah. Will you drop that camera back there, too?
Yeah, they, they lost their picture, too.
Loved it. Oh, yeah, loved it.
You came in late, I was trying to hide everybody.
Did you really? Did you live in Shambur?
I was showing property and they're taking and they're talking.
Everybody in Shambur.
She's on my email.
As it gets, like, now look, whatever it looks like.
Not legal.
I, I.
Not legal, it's per election.
What's that? Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Are your daughters?
Yeah, right, yeah.
I know, very.
That's what I'm saying.
See you, Chuck.
Yeah, yeah, Chris.
Thank you. It's longer than I'd like them, so.
I had around, uh, the village's activities.
No, you called on again.
Never know.
Yeah.
Close, you don't lose my number. And Chris, I don't know, you must find my plaque somewhere.
Ah.
What happened?
Too bad Ann and Bobby were.
Anyway, I just responded.
Yeah, well, Bobby's still sick, so.
Feel bad. Please, she recalls.
She was here, so she was, yeah. Not a good. Yep, it's good to see, right. Uh, and, and in April.
And we said hi. Hi, Ann.
Doc.
All right. Good night. Thanks for staying, everyone, keeping us company. Okay.
We haven't, I have four, I have four big questions that I had hoped. Frickin' Jesus.
Did my review.
Okay, oh, yeah.
No, motion to adjourn?
Tom.
Okay, moved by trustee Carter, seconded by trustee Jamil. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks, Anne, for sticking it out.
So...